Vice Mayor Miller, just want to do a sound check real quick.
I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We'll now call to order the August 11th, 2025, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shailo, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Witt.
Present.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Here.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll call is complete.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
Yeah, I mentioned this to City Manager Quinde, just kind of the regular process of having something on a study session before it's on a regular meeting. I don't know. I was kind of looking through these items to see certainly some of these, I believe we've seen on a study session, but just kind of sticking with that policy of looking at it on a study session just to give the public some time to respond and kind of learn about what's going on. So I'm open with this to approving it as is, or at least discussing each one item by item to decide if we want to do that. But I did just want to share that.
Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of a few things. The meeting minutes for the July 28th, 2025, regular meeting, appropriation ordinance A-081125, AP payment register as of 8/11/25, appointment of Jerry Rankin to the Sister City Board to fill an unexpired term expiring in January of 2028, and appointing, an appointment of Crystal Hall to the Sister City Board, filling an unexpired term expiring January of 2028 as well.
I don't know, I'll maybe ask a question here before we get to proving that. I did have some questions, I guess, on the bills. There was a line item that I've never seen before here for Olson Engineering for biweekly meetings. I don't know if maybe City Manager Quinde could speak to that.
It's been standard practice in the past for members or representatives from Olson Engineering to meet with city staff on commission days at two o'clock. They submitted this bill, and since they submitted that bill for this, even though it's been past practice, we've told them that biweekly meetings are no longer necessary. We will call them as needed based on the rate that they're charging to come meet.
Do you know roughly what, it looks like $1,571.50 on that bill. Do you know how much of that was for the biweekly meetings or what time period that was?
I believe it was $756.
Okay, but that's going away?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
No discussion, just clarification question for staff, particularly those items B and C appropriation ordinance and AP payment register where those were typically at the end of our packets since the time I've been there, just seeing those now on the consent agenda, the way I'm interpreting that, that just imparts official action by the commission acknowledging that we see those and.
The first best policy and best practice is to have those itemized not only for the commission but for the general public to see what bills are being paid every two weeks.
Great, great. Yeah, and just saying that those have typically been at the end of our packets, just now it's been shifted to our consent agenda.
Any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under six, Public Commons Communications, is six A, Public Forum. If there's anyone that would like to address an item not on our current agenda, they may do so at this time. There is a three-minute time limit, and we just ask that you state your name and address for us.
When we can do this, Mayor.
I was gonna. Does it make sense to do it during the public forum or the budget discussion? I guess, well, we could, yeah, well, this part, we'll do it up here. Yep.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. I'm Kevin Andrew. I'm the president of our sister city. This past summer, last month, July, we sent our delegation. This is our 40th year doing that, 41st, excuse me. So that's a big milestone for a city this size to have a sister city for that long. This is our gift. Audrey was one of the delegates. There we go. We did bring our delegates if you do want to do a picture at some time. If that's all right.
I would probably be good to get them right now if they're here.
Yeah.
All right.
If the delegates could come up, those that went. This is a good number for Abilene.
If you want to come up and stand behind us here, that'd be awesome. So yeah, center in front of the, there you go. However, how are you feeling?
Mayor Ryan, for people that are here with budget questions, are you wanting them to wait till the budget section of the agenda?
Probably best, well.
I don't know. I guess it looks like we mostly have that on study session. If anybody has anything they want to say, I'd be inclined to listen right now.
Yeah, because it's going to be a while. So if we want to, yeah, I would be good with that. So keeping our public forum section open, if we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the current agenda, though we're having it on the study session, they may do so at this time. Please state your name, address, and there's a three-minute timeline.
I'm Schaefer. My address is 1714 Northwest 10th Street in Abilene. On behalf of the Abilene Omatama Sister City Board and also the 2025 Sister City Delegation, I want to thank you for many years of funding the Sister City program. We use and appreciate the current funding of $10,000 annually to cover our many expenses. The funding helps support our delegation exchange between the two cities. We feel strongly about the city of Abilene's involvement in this sister city friendship. I first learned of Abilene's sister city relationship with Omatama Japan in 2011. During one of my first years in Abilene, my children and I had an opportunity to hear President Eisenhower's granddaughter, Mary Jean Eisenhower, speak about the People-to-People program. Mary Jean recalled staying at her grandparents' home as a young girl. She knew her grandfather was often awake in the night, worrying about the state of the world. In 1956, the Sister City program was created by President Eisenhower as part of the broader People-to-People initiative. Mary Jean spoke of her grandfather's purpose. He envisioned a program where ordinary citizens could connect with their counterparts in other nations. He believed that personal relationships fostered through these People-to-People and Sister City affiliations would foster peace and understanding between people from different countries. Mary Jean now makes her home in Abilene and until recently served on the Abilene Sister City Board. Last month, she presented the keynote at the annual Sister Cities International Conference in Fort Worth. As the boyhood home of President Eisenhower and now is the current home of his youngest granddaughter, Mary Jean, Abilene of all cities should support this program. It shows our commitment as a city, not only to our sister city friendship with Omatama, but also to President Eisenhower and his vision for a peaceful future. For 41 years, our two cities have nurtured this friendship. Each year adds another layer to the special relationship between us. Many people in Abilene and Omatama know about the Sister City friendship, even if they have not been directly involved. Throughout the years, we have each had our own unique experiences. As a collective group, we have developed a strong bond, a foundation that will continue to support the Sister City program well into the future. Those of us traveling this summer were extremely fortunate to represent the city of Abilene during this Sister City exchange. We learned a lot about Japan and Omatama, and we were able to visit many places of interest. Our hosts' families treated us very well and introduced us to many aspects of Japanese life: food, customs, daily routines, and daily life. During this trip, I think we were able to do just what President Eisenhower envisioned. We developed meaningful relationships with citizens in another country and in our own small way fostered peace and understanding. In closing, thank you for your consideration. Although we understand the need for a balanced city budget, we feel very strongly that the Sister City program should not be defunded. This program has touched many lives in both Abilene and in Omatama. We expect the friendship to last well into the future, and we are counting on the city of Abilene to be a true part of this friendship between our two cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, please state your name and address, and there is a three-minute time.
You should know me. I'm Mary Jo Miles, 1001 North Van Buren in Abilene. And I know that you're going to be talking about this at another meeting and also a special meeting. But, and I don't have anything written, so it's all from the cuff. I'm talking about the defunding of the Abilene City Band. I'm a member and have been a member for I don't even know how many years. My husband also has directed it and is a member. We feel that it's a very important part of Abilene's history. It's almost as old as Abilene. He told me how many years, I think 144. And the Abilene Municipal Band has been in both of Ike's inaugural parades in Washington DC. We still have a member out, although I don't think he's playing anymore, who was there. Bill Robinson was at both. And so that's, that's something that to think about. And plus, my husband was talking about this today. We foster students. Students could come into the band at, I believe, eighth grade. And he said there was at one point, one man was 98 and his seatmate was 15, and she was learning how to play the sax from him. I don't know what everybody else thinks about bands and music, but I feel it's so important, so very important. And when I heard about it being defunded, both of us went, oh, we just couldn't believe it. And so, and I know a lot of people are, are behind us in this too. And, and I would just ask you to consider, I know that you have a budget, and I know it's important to be able to run the town, that's important, but the money that we use is for members, we pay them a little bit for practice and a concert, and then maintaining the band show, we have a rehearsal hall within the band show. And air conditioning, heating, whatever, we just, we do use it. And we even use it in the winter months, we have a concert at the Eisenhower Center in December, and we also have something called the, I can't think of it now, Heart of America Band. And we have been in that for over 30 years, and we usually meet in Abilene. Usually have a concert somewhere in the region, and this year it will be in Abilene. So I, I just want you to consider the band and how important the arts are in Abilene and should be, should be considered because it's a great program and people come and people are always telling me how much they appreciate the band. So please think about it. Thank you.
I do have a question, if you've got a moment.
Yes.
I don't know that we have any clarity on how that money is spent or how it's budgeted, who's paying for the heating and air and all that.
See, I don't have that information specific. I don't have that, but I can, I can get that for you.
That would be really helpful for us as we go forward.
Okay, well, all it was was just from the gut today.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Please state your name, address, and three-minute time limit.
Yeah, my name, my name is Bob Bowe, and my address, 921 South Buckeye, Abilene. And I think the quality of life things are important, as important as paving roads and et cetera, repairing sewer lines and water lines and all that sort of thing. And so I'm, I'm just here today to, I've been involved with the Sister City program since the mid 1980s when Mayor, I just forgot his name. When Mayor Mizuotoneuchi from Japan, they signed an agreement. And and I went with the first two delegations to Japan. I think it's just so important to have this program for our own kids and families to experience. Cliff, Cliff Asling was the, was the mayor, sorry. He, I think it's just important that our, our own families get to experience this program and expand their horizon, meeting people from another country, visiting another country. And plus, it gives us the opportunity to share American values and American experience and what Abilene is all about with the delegations that come here from there. So I really encourage you to continue to support the Sister City program and also the band concert. I think quality of life things are as important as infrastructure things. So thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Seeing none, we will move into business items. First up, 7A, consider approval of 2024 inter-fund transfer reallocations interim city manager Quinn Day.
Good evening. As was pointed out by April with the auditor Barney, the city had a budget violation in 2024 by over-expending in the sales tax street fund. We can correct that budget violation even after the fact by doing reallocations of the inter-fund transfers that were made in 2024 to pay for that project. In front of you is a, there's no formal paperwork. We're just seeking authorization to reallocate those. It, it's simply journal entries in the 2024 budget. Normally, in the course of a municipal business during the audit process, if there's a potential budget violation, those inter-fund transfers can be reversed through a journal entry and never make it through the audit report. But because those were done prior to myself or Kelsey as interim finance director, the decision was made to present those in the budget and then seek guidance from the governing body, make those inter-fund transfers. If you authorize that, Kelsey has already done the work internally. You can see what those amounts were, where it was $300,000 taken from the general fund, money from the ARPA fund, from capital improvement, and all put in the sales tax street fund to finish the 14th Street project in 2024. We're asking the governing body to authorize the inter-fund reallocations, which would erase the budget violation from the 2024 audit. And in your packet is the 2024 audit without those transfers, which then we no longer have a budget violation.
One of my questions is, I understand the bizarre, the way my, I guess, plain language read of it is this clean thing, clean things up. It gets official governing body action to clean up those journal entries. In terms of long-term record-keeping, what I, I don't know if this is something that can be done, but say the governing body approves this, and then our next item is this, this audit. If there can be a note or a letter that stays with that audit that reflects this dysfunction that happened, just, I know in my time here, I've looked at audits from 10 years ago to try to get an understanding of the situation we're in now. So I could see this as useful to somebody 10 years from now to go, what happened, having that permanent record associated with the audit, kind of acknowledging what's happened. I don't know if that's possible or, or if that makes sense.
It does. Like I said, normally those are, any journal entries to correct potential issues are done during the audit, but because of the timing, we're asking for the governing body's approval. What we can do is include a memorandum per record that will go in there along with the meeting minutes from when Barney and Associates presented the original audit and then meeting minutes once they're approved from this meeting in there with the audit as an attachment. So it'll be a permanent record of what happened and what we did to fix it.
Right.
Yes.
One of my concerns is with the ARPA funds. All those were required to be spent by 12/31/2024. I just want to make sure that reclassifying and as such doesn't put us in any limbo of having those clogged back by the federal government.
No, all we're doing is, rather than all of those monies being transferred, which is just a paper transaction to the street sales tax fund, they're being put back into those funds and the expenses are coming out. And so the ARPA funds were spent. It's just a matter of saying where they were spent from.
Thank you.
So I mean, you've already alluded to this, but it'll remove the budget violation, but we can also have record of what happened and all the dollars flowing, correcting.
Yes.
Correct, correctly flowing back to make that budget violation kosher. So I think that's, it sounds like a win-win to me.
And there wouldn't be a budget violation on the city's record.
Right. Do we have any further questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to authorize the inter-fund transfer reallocations as pretended.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is 7B, consider approval of resolution number 081125-1, a resolution accepting the independent audit of financial statements of the city of Abilene, Kansas for year ending December 31, 2024, as prepared by Varney and Associates CPS LLC, interim city manager Quinn Day, interim finance director Brian.
Now that the governing body has approved the adjustments that were requested, the audit was changed to reflect that. So the recorded expenditures in the sales tax street fund were reduced by $1.2 million, which resolves the prior budget overage and restoring compliance with state statute and budget laws and the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. The resolution in front of you is a formal document to approve the audit that was presented by Varney and Associates. The changes that were made were the page on the transfers, which are no longer reflected in the budget, according, the changes to the funds that paid for them, and then an error that Commissioner Kohlhoff noted has been corrected.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 081125-1, a resolution accepting the independent audit of financial statements of the city of Abilene, Kansas for year ending December 31, 2024, as prepared by Varney and Associates, to include that memo describing the city minutes and our previous action item of approving the 2024 inter-fund transfer reallocations.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is 7C, consider approval of resolution number 081125-3, a resolution authorizing establishment of an account in the municipal investment pool and authorizing the city manager, city clerk, and finance director to withdraw funds, to issue letters of instruction, and to take all other actions deemed necessary or appropriate for the investment of funds. Interim city manager Quinn Day.
It's consistent with previously discussed best practices related to financial authorizations. You'll have two, this resolution and one following that Kelsey will discuss with the governing body, but what it does is it does not authorize, authorize persons by name, which has been done in the past, authorizing them by position, which is the standard and what's also recommended by K-MAG, ISLM, the League of Kansas Municipalities. The resolution is a form resolution by K-MIP. We have a, an account with the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool, but they won't accept the resolution unless it's exactly in their format. So what we're asking is that you designate the city manager, city clerk, and finance director, who were previously authorized by name to transfer funds for the investment in municipal investment pool, authorized to withdraw funds, to issue letters of instruction, and take other actions necessary or appropriate for the investment of city funds. Although this does authorize by position, it still remains our preference to invest money that we have idle funds in local banks. Should they want that investment, it's preferable to keep that money locally if we can. This just provides another tool for the city to invest its fund and get the best return.
Does this require more than one signature of those three offices mentioned?
No, it depends, it depends on the transaction, but generally not.
Are those transactions broken out in here? And I apologize, I didn't see them in the, in the packet. Is that, is that dictated by the board? Are the responsibilities for each party, the city manager, the finance director, and the city clerk, are those permissions essentially granted by the municipal investment pool?
No, those are determined by, the city has an investment policy that determines who can do what and with one or two signatures. Generally, for most investments, the city finance director will go out and find the best investment vehicle, provide that to the city manager, who either agree or disagree, and invest that or not. It's good practice for the finance director to be looking regularly at different vehicles as interest rates change to get the best return for idle funds for the city.
Do we have an investment policy?
Yes.
So in seeing this alongside the next item that we'll be discussing, it, they seem to be in the same theme where they address people by name instead of by position. So that brings the assumption on, on my part that, so they've been authorized by name. Do you have a feeling for how long, has that always been Abilene's practice? Have these always been authorized by name instead of by position or?
I didn't look past the existing. I didn't look past, uh, the existing resolutions to see what has been done in the past, but my prior experience o- over the last several decades is by position.
Right.
Because then you don't have to change or do a new resolution every time there's a personnel change.
Right. Yeah, that was just a point of curiosity on my part is how long that practice had been in place of addressing these by, by name instead of by position, so.
I do believe the resolution was from 2012 and they were that far back dated for, uh, positions, so. Or that, I'm sorry, people.
Yeah, and then it was in 2012 when it was addressed by name instead of by position. Okay.
And to, uh, answer Commissioner Kohoff's question, the investment policy, uh, the management responsible, the investment program is delegated to the director of finance, who establishes procedures for operation of the investment program, consistent with this policy and approval, subject to the approval of the city manager. Uh, and no person may engage in investment transaction is, except as provided under the terms of this policy and procedures.
Do we have any questions, further questions for staff on this item? No, seeing it from the banking side, you run into issues when they are named, when, when municipalities or businesses, when they're named by name, it can sometimes lead to some difficult processes to get funds withdrawn or accounts closed, things like that, when they're
Or non-compliance if the names aren't changed when
Right. You run into it when, uh, one of them is retired, one of, you know, one of the names on there has died and you're going to try to find the retired person to sign, not you, not you. But, yeah, I've, I've seen that, it's, it's a practical issue, so.
That'll make a motion to approve resolution number 081125-3, resolution authorizing establishment of an account in the municipal investment pool and authorizing the city manager, city clerk, and finance director to withdraw funds, to issue letters of instruction, and to take all other actions deemed necessary or appropriate for the investment funds per following the city's investment policy.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is 7D, consider approval of resolution, excuse me, of resolution number 081125-2, a resolution authorize, authorizing certain signatures on deposit accounts at financial institutions for the city of Abilene, Kansas. Interim finance director Briand.
Mayor and commissioners, this is, um, regarding the deposit accounts for the city. It's along the same lines of the previous one that you just did. Best practice recommends that authorized signers be designated by official position rather than by name. This position-based approach applies, provides continuity, ensuring the authority is automatically transferred when staff turn, turnover occurs without requiring repeated updates to the resolution.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item?
Um, I do want to note that the resolution is not a complete list of the financial, financial institutions within the city. Um, you might notice one that's missing there, Mayor Ryan. Um, but I believe also, um, Bennington, and I'm not sure if, um, our credit unions would also qualify as well, but I think we should make that list exhaustive.
Yep. Perfect. That's how it usually is, or, yeah. Yeah, I was kind of shocked to see that as well, so.
This is a little bit, I mean, the way it reads, it says the city, city of Abilene utilizes the services of these specified banks all located in the city. I don't know if that, how you might propose rewording that.
Very, but if it is sometimes, uh, the city of Abilene utilizes, uh, financial institutions located in the city of Abilene, Kansas, and then on to the next line.
Yes, I think that's an acceptable proposed change that you could approve with that change.
Do we have any further questions for city staff on this item?
Unless there's any urgency, would the commission be amenable to tabling this for the proposed changes and looking at it in two weeks?
I mean.
That work?
But yeah, as long as there are no pressing, okay.
Then I'll make a motion to, uh, table this resolution so we can see those changes, um, for approval in our next regular meeting.
And I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is 7E, consider approval of the establishment of project-specific funds, C-Clip project fund, industrial park expansion fund, and sports complex recreation improvement fund, interim city manager Quinde.
It's another item to improve clarity or transparency in the budget process and how, uh, the budget is handled, rather than take the general obligation temporary notes and place them in varying funds and paying the cost out of varying funds. It is, uh, ideal that we establish a fund specifically for the C-Clip project. So the revenue goes in, it's paid out, once it's done, we can close it. And it doesn't get mixed up if it's put in the special, uh, sales tax street fund or the special highway fund. Same thing with the industrial park expansion and the, uh, recreation improvements, but also, um, the city has established rural housing incentive district. They have a special fund for that, and we're working with a developer on a new modern income housing grant. There's a Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. So in addition, we're asking for, uh, permission to establish a modern income housing, uh, grant fund. This is just a, a, uh, housekeeping item that allows the, uh, city staff to track the receipts and expenditures for those projects, uh, better. These would be non-budgeted funds, so, uh, there's no levy, there's no special revenue, they get reported at the end of the year on all transactions that happened. But it's a much cleaner way, uh, to track those projects, not only for city staff and the governing body, but for the public, see how they're being spent.
Basically serves as a pass-through.
Yes.
Yep. Do we have any questions for city staff on that?
I think this is a good, good move, help us track expenditures better and have a little bit more clarity, specifically when we're working on budget.
Agreed.
So thank you.
That'll make a motion to approve the establishment of project-specific funds, C-Clip project fund, industrial park expansion fund, sports complex recreation improvement fund, and then you want me to add the
Modern income housing?
Moderate income housing funds as well.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is 7F, consider approval of an engineering agreement with Olson for the C-Clip project, South City Limits to South 6th Street. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Brad Anderson, the Public Works Director. It was a rather long agenda, uh, so if you guys got it in your packet, I won't, I won't read the whole thing, but I think I'll, I'll point out just a couple of the more important things about what we're, um, trying to bring to attention, so, um, down to the fourth paragraph, basically to improve fitness, efficiency and coordination, uh, the city is requesting that the C-Clip 1 project, which is the project that was actually approved, um, last year for the engineering agreement with Olson, um, be combined with the C-Clip 2 into a single project. Now that, uh, the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, has combined the two projects under one project number, um, and we can, um, put the whole project together, uh, we're going to try and have Olson prepare everything engineering need we need to do as an amendment into the two, uh, projects into one. The combined maximum amount of money that KDOT is still throwing in is $400,000 for each project for a total of $800,000. Um, and the city is still responsible for non-participating construction costs, so, um, since we combined the two projects, we, um, brought it to Olson's attention because, um, uh, a little bit of expectancy of the projects, and I don't have extremely detailed numbers, so I apologize for that. But they, uh, they did, uh, reestimate their engineering fees on the, on the south part, which would be C-Clip 2, and, uh, those engineering parts for that part that we're actually looking for today, um, was 41,500, so. You have any major questions?
What is the full budget amount for each project? C-Clip 1 and C-Clip 2?
For the total combined?
No, for each individual.
Are you talking engineering itself or project costs?
Uh, the whole project cost for, by, by 1 and 2, if you will, please.
Hey, let me see what I
In July of, uh, '25, Olson prepared, uh, C-Clip 1, which is, um, Southwest 6th Street to the city limits, $403,000, and then, um, North Union Pacific Railroad to Northeast 5th Street is 663,779. That brings the, uh, construction subtotal to 1,66,779. Engineering and design is 202,425, and then construction admin 98,895, for the total estimated project cost of 1,368,099. That's their estimate, that's not the actual project cost until it goes out for bid, and that does not reflect the $10,000 that was negotiated down on the C-Clip 2 portion. The commission's already approved engineering agreement for C-Clip 1, C-Clip 2, uh, portion. Olson came a couple meetings ago and presented a, uh, $51,500 design engineering cost and the $98,000 for construction engineering. Since then, we've negotiated that down to 41,500 for design engineering of, uh, C-Clip 2, and the $98,000 is not a total cost, that's a not-to-exceed cost.
I guess I'm a little confused because I believe we just, uh, put our taxpayers on the hook for 1.9 million dollars for this project. Some seen a, you said a total project cost of 1.368. I'm curious why we're why we have 1.9 million dollars in the bank for that.
I was not part of the, uh, determining what those dollar amounts were for the C-Clip 1 and 2 project. At the 1.9 million dollars, I came in late in the game when it was, uh, already approved and bonds were sold. Anything that is not used for that project, like I said, this is just an estimate of the 1.36 million dollars. It could come in lower, it could come in higher, but what is ever not used and be, uh, paid off or is not the amount that we have to borrow in two years in, uh, bonds. Keep in mind that the money that was borrowed for the C-Clip 1 and 2, the industrial park expansion and the recreation are temporary notes. Once those costs come in and the grant monies, two and a half million dollars from the Department of Commerce for industrial park, 800,000 from KDOT for the Buckeye project. And once those costs come in, in '28, I believe, you'll have to issue general obligation bonds, uh, for a period to be determined by the governing body of whatever's outstanding.
I guess my, my concern, and I think I've voiced this previously, is that we bring the scope of this project down dramatically so that it falls in line with the grant. Um, I believe that's a 90-10 match, so we'd be looking at $40,000 per project. That first one, for some reason, doesn't have that much. I guess there's probably some engineering costs affiliated with that one, the 400,000. Um, I would like to see that whole project brought down within that $880,000 project to maximize the KDOT funds and to get rid of some of the, um, the wants that aren't needs in that project before we approve this.
I think that would be something that, uh, um, I think it's been all broken down out in the, uh, project style, so ultimately it'd be up to you, commission, to decide, um, what the extras would be, and, and I'm not, you know, if you want to call them an extra when you're talking, um, drainage inlets, tubes, sidewalks, everything, like anything that would be a cost to the city, not, not the actual street preservation, um, part of it. And, and, uh, I think the only other information I can maybe give you, Commissioner Kohoff, about, um, the original cost estimate would be, I, I think that's where numbers have eventually were set at the beginning of the projects when they were to, excuse me, this is two separate projects and how they were bid out separately with the estimated costs, and then, um, then they've changed since that. So, um, that's only my opinion on what might, may have happened with, um, the original number, now that numbers have changed and they've been consolidated. So, yeah. We'll, we'll come back as a, um, this was, um, a discussion-type deal. Basically, what we're trying to do is just, um, get, get this, uh, second part of the C-Clip um, figured out so we can, um, hopefully get going on a timeframe. They want to put it out to, to bid yet this fall. Um, but there's been no engineering, there's been no work at all done on the south end, just no bills. Well, this is the stage we're in for this part.
This is actually an action item for the, uh, commission's consideration because of the timing was going out for bids. If we do, well, commission desires to hold back on the what's being done, we'd have to check with KDOT and see if we have to reapply because the, uh, what was authorized by KDOT as far as the technical scope of the both grants is milling and overlay, curb and gutter, curb inlets, um, and storm sewer, sidewalk and, uh, replacement ADA ramps and pavement markings. If we change the scope of the works, that may require that, uh, we have to reapply to KDOT, I'd have to check with them.
What is the timeline? Or the deadline that we're under on that?
The, uh, ideally, or, uh, they have to design the second map. When the anticipated start date would be, uh, August 25, and then design, I can start in 25, then, uh, anticipate a completion date. We would be going out for bids and what, uh, the, June 25.
Um, just so I'm clear, is there any problem with delaying that? A week, a month, three months, and still meeting our contractual guidelines with KDOT? Do, do you anticipate that there is, I mean, if we were to delay this for, say, a month to get a, a scope and make sure that we can pay for what we need?
I think the first thing we'd have to do is determine that, uh, mission wants to change. I can use an example, it knows that KDOT's important improvement project, an issue that I'll discuss. Reallocate with, or then reapply agenda. Generally, it's still for the project.
When you apply for a grant, especially with KDOT, the general scope is already known, this, this section of the roadway, and this is what we want to do, and they score it and base it off of the application. If you change the scope, that may change uh, them saying that you can use it or you have to reapply.
I'm just looking at our guests here this afternoon. The Sister City who gets $10,000 a year, the the band who gets $10,000 a year, and we're talking about $25,000, 25 years worth of funds in the half a million dollar difference between what we've funded and what we've approved for this project. What are we doing? What are we doing here?
What do you, what do you mean, what we have approved? We've previously approved this.
You approved a bond for 1.9 million dollars for, for Buckeye. UP to 5th Street, Southwest 6 to the city limits. If we're talking about cutting the band, if we're talking about cutting Sister City, if we're talking If we're talking about cutting the band, if we're talking about cutting Sister City, if we're talking about firing employees. Let's cut one point one million dollars, that's not even necessary for this project before we start firing employees.
Okay, we have any further questions for city staff on this item?
But uh, our recommendation is that you approve the uh, work order amendment number one with Olson. Or the design engineering or the C clip two portion and then the construction administration. Uh, for both projects combined as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until the August twenty-fifth meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any commission discussion?
I think I'll just reiterate, I guess what my expectations are, I think I'd like to know at the August twenty-fifth meeting. What latitude we have on this project to maintain all of the K dot funding. Um, and what our cost share would be, what can be stripped out of that. Um, from that one point nine million or one point five, whatever the number is. So that we can bring that in line with a project that's reasonable and affordable, um, and we can meet our budget obligations going forward.
I think K dot's gonna want to know what scope of work do you want, we call them and say the commission would like to reduce the scope. The question's gonna be then what do you want to do uh, specifically?
What would be the best way to address that in your opinion?
Um, the way I'm thinking about this is a potential way to phrase it with K dot is what is a way. For us to move forward with this project as applied that minimizes the non-participating costs. For the city, I think that's the intent.
Does that, non-participating costs would be um, your engineering, your design engineering.
What I, from what I'm remembering on this project is the participating costs are the resurfacing. Non-participating are the things like sidewalk, stormwater inlets, things like that, I believe those weren't. A part of K, K dot's um, ninety-ten split up to that, respective to four hundred thousand dollar amounts.
That's consistent with my recollection as well.
The project authorization is for one million three hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars for construction and. Seventy-eight thousand seven twenty-seven for construction engineering for those totals. The official uh, estimate in twenty-four, when this first started was one point two million, and an estimate of twenty-six when it'll be a bid. With an inflated cost of uh, nine percent or point zero nine, brought it up to one point three million dollars. We'll be more than happy to ask any question of K dot that uh, you'd like, but. Yes, I, what do you want to take away from the project is what? You have uh, milling overlay of the streets, you have sidewalk ADA ramps and uh, stormwater inlets.
Do you, I apologize for interrupting, do you have the uh, engineers' um, expected cost in front of you?
Yes.
Is that in our packet, I, I think I've seen that previously, but I'm not seeing it right now.
Uh, no, it's not in your packet. So Southwest Sixth Street to the city limits at the four hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, that would be C clip two. I'm looking at the cost, it's got mobilization, demolition removals of the street, contractor, construction staking. Millings, two-inch uniform, uh, one and a half, half-inch overlay. Full depth patching up to six inches, leveling course, um, full height curb and gutter. Four-inch thick concrete sidewalk, sidewalk ramp, uh, permanent signing, pavement marking and traffic control. If you took out the uh, sidewalk. A hundred and fifty uh, square feet, I'm looking at the right line would be uh, fifteen hundred dollars and the ramps would be seven thousand dollars. You're still gonna have to sign it, uh, mark the pavement. Do the removal, the overlay, the depth patching. Then on uh, street construction for C clip one, you have mobilization, demolition and removal of the street. Um, construction staking, two-inch millings, again, one and a half inch overlay, six inch full depth patching, leveling. Um, urban gutter combined sidewalk construction, four inch. Sidewalk ramp ADA compliant, sign removal and reset, pavement markings, traffic control. Lager for construction near the railroad. Polypropylene by actual geo grid, that would be for uh. The sidewalks, demolition removal of storm sewer, contract construction staking in the storm sewer and then inlets. Generally, the storm sewers would be paid for by the storm sewer fund, not from the general fund. Those are the items that the governing body would have to decide that you wanna remove.
And Kelsey, correct me if I'm wrong, but those funds that are not used as part of that temporary financing note, they will either be invested or paid back. So we're not actually expending those funds.
Yes, they will all be invested to start out with and then. My assumption is we will pay back the funds with any remainder that we have left. Or you guys as a governing body can decide how to move forward with those funds.
And with the bond interest rate that we got, we'll likely, we would make an interest profit on the funds that are invested.
I don't think that's a guarantee.
It's, it is.
Yeah, it's not a guarantee.
Right.
Yeah.
Right now, we're looking at what we want this project to look like, if we approve this, we're going to authorize to spend up to the, I'm not sure what the number is, one point four million or one point nine million. Yeah, so somewhere between one point four and one point nine would be my, would be my guess. I'm not ready to approve it if we're gonna exceed eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which is the amount awarded by K dot for the C clip. And the city's ten percent match.
So I would point out, and I wasn't here when it was done, but at some point, uh, I would assume that the governing body approved the project and the sculpt of work. Did you have an engineering agreement with Olson design, least C clip one? But that would have included what was included in the project as scope and these items that I just read off. Big clip two, it mirrors that.
Yeah, I'll say that, that is the case, that the governing body approved that scope, um. From my perspective, that was before I fully had an understanding. An appreciation for our budget situation that we're in right now, why I'm agreeable to tabling this item. Um, having staff reach out to K dot or um, the question, which the question boils down to is. Are we still eligible for this grant if we remove those concrete portions of the project, I think that's. Um, that's really the question, um, it would be interesting to hear K dot's feedback to that. Then we as a governing body can make the decision if um, that means we're waiting another grant cycle before these projects get done. Or um, um, we move forward with it as it was approved for that.
Sidewalks and uh, stormwater inlets, anything concrete.
Yep.
Do we know if the sidewalks are currently ADA compliant?
Many of them are not, as somebody who walks that area quite often, it's. Um, the inlets are certainly not ADA and uh, there's quite a few of those sidewalks. That have shifted enough to where they are tripping hazards. So as one of the business owners who came in here, um, while we were discussing this project previously, um, highlighted, so.
Do we have any further commission discussion on this item, on this motion?
I guess my concern is that we are compliant with whatever timelines we have from K dot. Um, we already had to return eight hundred thousand dollars to K dot. For um, let's say an ill-conceived uh, project outside of the city limits. And so I don't want to repeat that, um, that experience, so I want to make sure we're not. Alienating K dot on these, on these C clip projects. Um, I'm again looking to you, Mr. Quinde, I know you've got some experience here, do you think the two-week timeline is, is reasonable to get a, an answer from K dot?
Oh, I believe so, yes. Just uh, I'm trying to see if there is a, most grants have a deadline for completion of the project. But then again, if uh, K dot is amenable to changing the scope of the work without having to reapply. Then they should be amenable to changing the deadline. When the project had to be. The only outstanding question is that you, um.
Hi, I, I'm, my name is Brayson, I'm with Olson, um, just, I, I do have the schedule from K dot. And can provide clarification on those dates, yep. So the office check, I guess these, this would be like a ninety percent plan set to K dot. Is expected by September nineteenth. And then a um, let's see, final plan completion uh, would be November thirtieth and. Uh, we, K dot has in their schedule to be advertising for bid uh, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-six, so that. They require some, some time in there for review. And generally speaking, the twenty twenty-six, this is, this is programmed for a twenty twenty-six let. And I would expect that they would have some flexibility with these dates. So I, I don't see a big concern in pushing and tabling this item, um, if that's what you decide, thanks.
Have you been um, designing these plans yourself or?
They, they have, yes, I have been designing these, yes.
Uh, you might have a little bit better understanding of the cost estimates.
I do.
Therein, would you be willing to or able to tell us? Again, I, I'm not sure if it's, I believe it's C clip two, the north project at this point. Um, that was significantly more than four hundred thousand. What those, I guess, we're, we're talking about digging up storm sewers, right, I mean, that was.
That's correct.
Yeah, so can you break out that cost for us and as well as the sidewalks?
I don't have it in front of me, but the numbers that John presented, I, I believe were accurate with the, the amount, I know the, this, the current scope of the project that was directed. Um, by um, previous city, city staff was to include sidewalks. Um, the sidewalks from fourth to, I'm sorry, from third to fourth street. Are all non-ADA compliant, so those would, those are. Uh, that, the plan was to replace those in the current scope of work, but that is a non-participating cost with K dot, so that would be. All on the city.
And I guess just so I'm clear, the, the storm sewer costs. There's other costs excavation and that sort of thing that aren't necessarily tied directly to those, those tubes, right, that are gonna be indifferent line items on that budget.
The storm sewer would be all-inclusive of, of the entire.
That's everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Quinde, can you repeat that number for me?
Which number?
The storm sewer on the C clip two.
That's the one to the uh, south city limits?
North.
The C clip one, the original?
It's either one or two.
It'd be secret one, yeah, though. Kind of, it's the bottom, where's the bottom of the page in the right side?
Demolition removal of storm sewers is ten thousand dollars. Uh, inlet, replacing the inlets with type B, combined five by fours, twenty-seven thousand dollars. With the area inlet of eighty-five hundred dollars. Again, these would come, these costs would come from the uh, stormwater fund, not from the general fund or. The bond.
Is that per inlet?
That was the total, total amount.
Eighty-five hundred is per inlet.
Eighty-five hundred is per inlet?
Yeah, for.
But it shows one.
Are there multiple, I think there's multiple, there's an area inlet, there's a curb inlet, there's.
There's an area inlet, four by four for eighty-five hundred dollars, an inlet type B, three of them. At nine thousand dollars each, which is the twenty-seven thousand, and uh, construction staking of the storm sewer, one for three thousand. That's the only storm sewer I see on that.
So a total of four structures to be replaced?
Yes.
As a matter of how my brain works, I'm not a fan of reviewing spreadsheets that I don't, not, don't have right in front of me.
Yeah, I also don't have it in front of me, so.
It, it seems like the commission direct, we haven't voted yet, but the commission direction is to table this for next meeting, it would be helpful for that information to get resent. Uh, to the commission so that then we can review those items.
Is, is the direction to reduce the scope to?
Not right now, so what, um, so right now we're at a table. Asking K dot the question if K dot's acceptable to move forward with the project without having to. Reapply if we remove those concrete portions.
But so I'm clear, to remove that is because of our budget conditions and cutting uh. Different funds for outside people, but just so I'm clear, the stormwater inlet portion would not be paid in the same fund. That any of those entities are or they've paid, be paid from, from the storm water.
Correct.
So, if you remove it from this project and you side down the road, we have the cash to do it, which the stormwater would do. You would have to have that engineered differently again.
Right, so, so you're bringing up a great point of two of these, whatever portions of the project, so pretty much, it's all the concrete work aside from. Those that can't be paid from the stormwater fund because that's a specific use fund that can only be used for stormwater improvements.
The sidewalk and the ADA.
Right, yeah, or if curb and gutter, I don't know if curb and gutter would also apply to a stormwater um, use, but.
Could, because it travels to it.
Yeah.
I mean, that ones, you can do either or, um.
Yeah, and so to the point of why I wanted to move forward with the sidewalks and ADA ramps is because they, they're not compliant and they are tripping hazards. And they are things that do need to get fixed eventually, um. That was again, from the perspective of when I, when I had different knowledge of our current budget situation, so that's why. I'm acceptable to asking K dot these questions, so that then the governing body can make the decision on whether or not. Um, we move forward with the project or um, we. Um, have to reapply to grants again, so.
And then we'll have to also look into the uh. The bonds.
Right.
Finance Director Brian, can you tell us what the account balance is on that stormwater fund? We're looking at another agenda item here, which I think is a couple hundred thousand dollars that I think comes from that same fund.
Yes, so currently allocated to that fund is, all right, there's a lot of numbers here. Six hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Do you have a good feel for the demands from our capital improvement plan for the next few years?
Or, they've been zeroed out because you don't have the money. There are no transfers of capital improvement.
Pretty straightforward.
Do we have any?
Down the road, if you want to do the uh, sidewalks or the ramps, you have the bond money now to do it. Uh, if you don't, even if we're, we go down the course that's recommended to bring the city uh, fiscally stable again. You won't be able to do that for several years at the soonest.
Yeah, so effectively, running the hypothetical, if K dot comes back and agrees, we can move forward with the project without ADA ramps. And without sidewalks, what that does for us, it just reduces the amount that's gonna go to long-term debt. Okay.
But you won't have, unless something drastic changes, you won't have the money to fix those sidewalks or uh, ramps for several years.
For this foreseeable future, yep.
Just in discussion here, I, I think maybe there's been some disagreement between the members of the, the commission on this and certainly members of the public who've spoken with us, but. Um, the sidewalk has historically been the responsibility of the adjacent. the sidewalk has historically been the responsibility of the adjacent property owners. I would say the ramps maybe not, I guess, I would like to kind of study the spreadsheet here, but I think if we're looking at ADA ramps and that sort of thing, if we are going to choose to do part of that project, that makes sense to do if we're not doing the sidewalks. And, you know, potentially, maybe we'll have interest revenue or something that we can use down the line, uh, potentially to cover those sidewalks, but I think we need to tighten our belts right now.
Ten million dollars that was borrowed, one point nine would be what would be for the streets. So that, any interest in that would be able to be used for streets or sidewalks. The four man and the remaining for the industrial park, that interest would go to those funds so that it would not be available for sidewalks or anything. And I'm not a construction guy, but if you decide to do the ADA ramps, kind of like doing an approach to a, a parking lot, you'll have to go back a certain distance on the sidewalk. So it all flows and is level. You won't have to do the whole section, but you will have to do more than just that.
Do we have any further commission discussion on the motion to table until the August twenty-fifth meeting? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven G discussion and direction regarding Northeast fifteenth drainage project. Public Works Director Anderson.
Um, good afternoon. Once again, commissioners, um, we're here revisiting the, uh, Northeast fifteen, uh, street drainage project and, uh, there was a lot of background provided in your packet on, uh, some of the history of this. And then, uh, basically, uh, the city engaged Olson Engineering to complete a drainage study, um, for two conceptual designs. Um, they did that. And then, um, commission requested that another detention basin referred to as our, the East Basin be investigated. Um, they did, uh, a little bit of information for that. Um, Jared with Olson performed most of that. I think he was here and discussed that with you. Um, I do believe he's here also if any in-depth questions come. We did meet, city staff met with the property owner of the East Detention Area. Um, that actually went very well. He's very open to, um, listening. Um, didn't seem to have a real problem with it potentially happening, but there'd be discussions to come over that, that she, um, want to be, um, basically informed about before a final decision was made. Um, so we're here, um, basically to try and decide whether or not, um, funding for the project, if it would go through, um, for the commission to determine, um, there's enough public interest um, for the whole project based on in one specific area of town or sue through special assessments and, um, I believe City Attorney Martin might be able to answer some questions if anything comes up there during this, um, discussion. So basically we're here with options today, um, providing, um, staff with direction to present professional services. Design, engineering, property acquisition, construction for the West Basin, the East Baseman Basin, excuse me, both of them together. Or, um, where do we go from here? Do we take no action at all? And, and then once again, when it comes down to, if you do want to take action, um, how are we gonna, um, what's our funding source going to look like with direction needed from you?
Yeah, I'll say what I'm thinking, um, coming back from our previous meeting of, uh, seeing if the two basin option really hinged on that property owner being um, willing to play ball. And since that's the case, then it'd be great to, to pursue doing both. And then, uh, using that stormwater fund to pay for the entirety of this project, both construction and engineering. Just with the precedent being set of what we did with that Faith Avenue, uh, detention basin. This one's a little different because all the area around it's been developed. Um, so there's, that was what was nice about the Faith Avenue project is that solving that problem solved it to enable development of that area around there, which has led to that Abilene Court, um, development. Maybe that worked better. Um, but scope wise, this is smaller than what that, that project was. So I see here that this, the second option of the detention basins is, um, two forty-five, um, if I'm reading the, that correct number right here. So, um.
Yeah, I can tell you just, uh, uh, on a personal note, um, Jared from Olson Engineering and myself, the day we met with the, the property owner, we actually had a very significant rain that morning and we went up and looked at that and we physically got to see water flowing at, at both locations. Um, so, um, that, that was actually really beneficial to, to see where the water was coming from. And, um, I'm not the engineer here, but I could, I could see, um, the benefit of both of them being in place because of where the water comes from. There's some hidden agendas, um, not agendas, but another piece of property up there, um, has talked about a, a little bit of an addition on their property and I, I've seen the plans, um, for that addition, and they have their own small detention basin within their property, which could only hopefully help in the whole situation. Um, but if, like I said, if you have any more in-depth questions, Jared, or if you have, uh, at this point, any financial recommendations or where we want to go, um, Aaron or, um, Mr. Quinde might be able to answer those also.
Yeah. Yeah, I see an overall net from those detain, or the maps showing the areas that are going to be served. It's a fairly wide neighborhood area that would be benefited by this project. So I see, I see that general public good in the same way that I saw with the Faith Avenue project.
I do want to disclose, um, I believe I've done so previously, but just for sake of completeness, that, uh, I am the member of the entity that owns, um, the parcel that is designated as the West Basin. So um, I'll be recusing myself on any vote on this matter. Um, I do, I guess, I want to make sure that it's clear that the options that we're talking about voting on are not the options on the, um, the write-up here from city staff. But I also think the way we had this broken out earlier, there was, um, it was really three options. So option one is basically putting in storm sewer for a significant portion of that neighborhood. Um, but I think we had it broken out in a, a one and two basin, either one or, one or two basin. Um, and it looks like maybe the, one of those options has disappeared here. I just wanted to clarify that.
I would say you're possibly right in the option listing that was given to you, um, because actually the first option was, um, um, to put the underground drainage in structures everywhere. And, um, if this is correct, that estimated cost, engineering cost for that project was, um, a million, a hundred and ten thousand roughly. And then the estimated cost of the, at that time was, um, two hundred and forty-five, three seventy for option two. Um, but once again, we've done no other. We haven't done anything engineering wise towards the East Basin. It was just, um, basically a continuation of a study to see whether it'd be beneficial or not.
I want to clar, clarify some wording right there. That storm sewer option, wait, that was project cost, not engineering.
Correct. That's correct. So project cost.
Yeah, the one point one for storm sewer, yeah, from bar pass discussions that, that was a non-starter for, for the commission. So, um, moving forward with these two different detention basin options are, are what we have. So, so that's why, just repeat what I said, um, good with moving forward with both basins and then, or.
Sure.
Sure. So Jared, we listened with Olson, yeah, me and Brad have been, um, looking at this plenty, but the true detention basin option would be, and I can't remember the exact cost, but doing both would be around like six hundred thousand, I think was what the construction cost came to. I think either basin on its own was roughly two to three hundred, but then combining them, um, got to the five and six hundred range. And we can pull the exact numbers, but just, uh, yeah, storm sewer was like one point one, one basin was three hundred something, the other basin was another two to three hundred something. So combining both basins would be six hundred.
Yeah, I want to say the co, combination of the two was like five forty-six or five sixty-four.
Yeah, because I think there were some savings if projects were combined because channels can be.
That's what I was questioning too, how we got two forty-five, three seventy for both of them.
Yep.
So if that's the case, well.
I don't know right now.
Yeah. So to that point, really tied back to our previous item that we were discussing, really what governing body needs to decide as a matter of priorities, um, then, because I mean, that fund holds six hundred, what did you said, six hundred and sixty thousand in it right now?
Six thirty-six.
Yeah, and it generates about sixty thousand dollars a year. And so that brings the question to the commission of for the Buckeye project, we want to use this fund to fund stormwater, how much we expect that's going to hold? And then how much funds to go to this project? So we almost need to make a decision on that other project if we want to use stormwater funds for the Buckeye project. And then that'll kind of help us determine how much funds are going to be left to, to work with these.
And if you decided to do both, uh, at the five hundred and forty-six, I don't think that counts engineering, um.
No, that was just construction.
So if you do both, you'll eat up the whole six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which will leave that fund unusable for several years to do any projects of significance. And that's what we'll come back in two weeks is to ask for formal direction. Do you want to do the West Basin? Or both basins with the accurate cost, uh, in, in your packet?
Right.
And the funding sources, but you're right. If you do one or both, then how do you address Buckeye down the road?
Right. So yeah, that's, that's a question for the governing body to consider is what, what's holding the most public good for using that fund and I don't have an answer for that right now. So, um, that's where my inclination on this is tabling this, this one yet again, um, so that a way we can have a clear understanding and give clear direction on the sleek C clip project and then also provide that direction for this next project.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion to table.
Second. It's a motion in a second to table until the next meeting? No, it's, it's on there as a, well, it's discussion and direction, but it's listed as a business item.
Yep.
So, motion in a second to table until the August twenty-fifth meeting? Do you have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under section eight, items for discussion is eight A, discussion regarding T hangars at the Abilene Municipal Airport interim city manager, Quinde.
The grant that was written, uh, to replace the hangars that were destroyed several years ago at the airport. It was written for a fifty fifty split between KDOT and a local match, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollar local match and two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for KDOT. It was written for a four-place hanger and did not include that, uh, the city intended to use, uh, federal funding. KDOT in this grant that was approved will only pay for construction cost, design and construction administration, engineering, or be fully paid by the city. And the funding streams can only be paid or come from KDOT and local funds. It cannot be incorporated, uh, into the funding scenario that was, I guess, intended last year. So we had a couple of options that we discussed with KDOT. Uh, one was we turn back the grant and start from scratch. Uh, after more than an hour discussing, we said, well, can we ask KDOT to amend the grant? And, uh, rather than do a fifty fifty construction, do a ninety or ninety-five, five, uh, split on design engineering. And the KDOT, uh, representative was agreeable to that and it's going to take it back to, uh, KDOT. If that works, um, the grant that we have would cover ninety-five. Would cover ninety-five percent of the, the design engineering and we would have to reapply, uh, to KDOT for the six or eight hangars that, uh, council has previously asked Olson to, uh, come up with costs for with, uh, six hangars and then an, an alternative, uh, full eight hangars. So if, uh, unless the, uh, commission objects and we can bring this back in two weeks to formally ask KDOT to change the grant and, uh, put forth a path to, uh, build the hangars, the FAA grant, it would follow that timeline. And if we, uh, were successful, we would receive the grant in July, August and twenty-six, which would put the construction of the hangars, uh, delay them until the spring of twenty twenty-seven. The only other option available to us is to, uh, turn back the grant, um, to KDOT because it was written for a purpose that was not intended, uh, so we can't use it and start from scratch. Our recommendation we'll bring back to you is to formally ask KDOT to repurpose the grant to cover, uh, ninety-five, five or ninety-ten, whichever they'll agree to, cover the engineering cost and then we'll reapply to the KDOT Airport Improvement Grant Program in January. We should know a few months later. And then with the FAA grants that we, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year we get. More for information, uh, for the commission than anything.
I did want to touch base on the insurance settlement. I think there were some concerns that maybe those funds had been spent on a, a different project.
Yes, uh, and you go back and you look at the airport fund, uh, it's difficult to find where that money went and where it was spent to, but it's not sitting in a project fund like we recommended that the, uh, commission authorized us to start doing a project specific fund. So the short answer is it's not there. No, it was used for other items over the past few years.
And because of that, I think it's going to be important for the commission to get some sort of report or understanding from staff on what it was spent on.
And for point of clarification, that would have been expended by the airport board.
Correct. Um, so following the staff recommendation and also taking, taking a step back and understanding, even saying if those grants were to work out and go through, uh, uh, as presented here, we still, those are all reimbursed grants. So the city would need to come up with have money in place to be able to pay for the engineering and construction before being reimbursed for it. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, uh, if KDOT will reallocate that grant for ninety-five, five or ninety-ten, uh, we would pay that, but to turn around on reimbursement is pretty quick. So it wouldn't be that we'd be waiting for months or, uh, much longer for that.
Yeah, that's on the KDOT side of
Right.
the granting, um. Is this, I, I see in here too, is that also, are we also going back and asking KDOT if they're okay with us using FAA funding or any sort of KDOT funding? Can't be mixed with.
We're going to write the application in January that we can use local funds, KDOT funds and federal funds.
Great.
So that way the six hundred thousand dollars from the FAA can be used.
Um, so KDOT turn around on reimbursement, it can be quick. How, how about the FAA?
Same.
Same?
Yeah. It would be any, uh, costs that are not covered that the city would have to come up with upfront.
Okay. That's what we would really need to prepare for.
Correct. And then when we get those numbers from Olson on the, uh, six hangars with the alternative eight, then we'll have a better idea of what that'll be. They did provide some information on the different scenarios that are included in your packet, uh, with the four plate, for, uh, T hanger with KDOT funds only, the, uh, six T hangars with, uh, no additional KDOT funds. That means not reapplying in January. Uh, eight place with no additional KDOT funds, uh, six place with additional KDOT funds, meaning we, uh, reapply in January. And then the eight. So there's different scenarios.
In conjunction, I guess, with looking at these different options, um, I think I brought it up in the last meeting, uh, when we, we spoke on this item, but I would like to make sure that we have uh, an economically viable plan for the city as essentially the landlord for these hangars, um, so that they're at a rate base split that they are paying for themselves or covering whatever, uh, debt might be associated with that.
Yes.
And not just, I guess, the new ones, but also the existing.
To the extent I met with the, um, airport board and went over this with them, uh, along with the lady from Olson, I apologize, I don't remember her name, uh, and talking with the airport board. If you look in your packet, the funding plan for an eight-place T hanger, uh, with additional KDOT funds, if all these numbers were to shake. KDOT funds, if all these numbers were to shake out, the engineering design would be a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. KDOT would cover ninety-five percent of that. So we would have to cover sixty-one hundred. The engineering amendment for alternate bids would be fifty-five hundred. KDOT would pay ninety percent, ninety-five percent, we'd have to pay two seventy-five. If you look at construction, they're estimating eight place hangars at one point four million, six hundred and forty coming from the FAA grant, a hundred and fifty each year after in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then the KDOT grant, keeping in mind their fiscal years do not align with ours. But under this scenario, if KDOT will reallocate those, we're successful in the grant in January, and with the FAA, the city's ad hoc share is less than two thousand dollars, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. That's the best deal we could come up with. It just pushes it back a year.
I don't know that we'll get a better deal than that.
Yeah, it's better than the eight hundred thousand we were looking at before.
I guess my, once we, obviously, it'll be a hard decision on or a concrete decision on when we have those that additional information at the next meeting. But yeah, I think it I think it makes sense to to wait a little, you know, wait until twenty twenty-seven to start the construction of it if we're gonna be able to get an eight place hanger out there for two thousand bucks.
Yes.
I I think we do need to keep in mind that does keep that take into account the insurance settlement, I believe. So really, we're talking about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars if those monies aren't actually in the bank.
Correct.
Any further questions on this item? Thank you. Next item under section nine, reports is nine A department reports. Do you have any?
Here I am once again, commissioners, just giving you a couple of brief updates. For this scheduled year, we've recently completed all my local street projects that are contracted projects that come from the sales tax street money. Third Street was overlaid, several streets were micro-surfaced within town. We had a mill or an overlay out on Van Buren where the county connected in. Everything stayed exactly where I thought it was going to be when it came to the actual billing. So we took several quarters to project what the revenue income was. Projected revenue seems to be staying right on course at four hundred and forty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. My plan for this year was to try and set projects at somewhere between the three hundred and ninety and the four hundred thousand to give us that forty to fifty thousand dollar buffer. And and when I say buffer, that all that would do is in the future, put that money towards a bigger, more in-depth project if needed. I'm already starting to put together a plan for next year. One of the contractors that I use for one of the projects basically just gave me the heads up that most of the time when you start putting these projects together, you start doing your planning in October and November, because they roll their calendar year on January. And in order to get on their pricing and their their better pricing, hopefully that will be my plan of attack. And that's exactly what it was last year. We were, if you remember, we were able to piggyback on to City of Salina, Dickinson County, and and from everything I know, they plan on doing more projects. So just a quick update there. The second thing I wanted to just give you an update on, so you're aware that on August fourth last week, the city of Abilene put out the bid letting for the wastewater treatment plant structural assessment for the project that was going to come on from the settling in the pit room. I'm putting pressure on our lines. It was let, I'm sorry, it was put out for the bid, and they're using Drexel, making contacts with everybody that they have for contractors. We do have an onsite pre-bid meeting scheduled for this week for proposed contractors that want to come take a look at the actual project, see what it's about. And then that that project is open until August twenty-ninth, when sealed bids will be in due here at City Hall. And from there on, we'll engineer be making a recommendation along with city staff. We'll then bring it to you, and all decisions will be based on you on on what the project's going to consist of, who we feel would be the best scenario. A project of this scale, I don't believe we're going to have very, if any, local contractors are going to take on any type of project like this. So but I just wanted to keep you updated because that will still be, that project will be coming in the future.
I had a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind, on the street projects.
Yeah.
Um, can you tell me which roads, if you know one off the top of your head, they got the PMA?
Meaning micro-surfacing?
I think, yeah, it's polymer modified asphalt, I think. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, I can. I think I can tell you off the top of my head. South Streeter, South Cedar Street from the South City Limits to Northwest Second Street. Be Northwest Fourth Street from Van Buren to Washington. Northeast Fourth Street from Kirby Street to Brady. Northeast Tenth Street from Buckeye to Brown, basically the base of the hospital. Charles Road from Brady to Buckeye. Hilltop from Buckeye to Mulberry. Summit from Mulberry to Spruce Way. Connect the dots where Spruce Way turns into Mulberry up to Northeast Sixteenth, and then Buckeye to Northeast Sixteenth, right beside Auburn Pharmacy.
Uh, what is the plan for Buckeye? I kind of look at Buckeye as our as Abilene's front porch, and I have a messy, messy front porch when we invite our guests in.
Um, yeah, I honestly don't have in my personal plan right now, any local street tax dollars scheduled for that, unless you guys want me to totally, I guess, my my look on it is I hate to throw away state of Kansas money. And and what I mean by that is the KDOT money, I mean, if you take their four hundred thousand dollars for a section of street for just a an overlay, and if we were forced to do them ourselves, we can't afford to do much on them. If I was going to do a micro-surface on that street, it could possibly work, but I guess we'd have to draw the line between where we use local, local city. I think most of the individuals in this room, and it's it's greatly appreciated, probably voted for that because they want their area town that they specifically live in to pay for the street. And I purposely kind of chose a street and each what I call quadrant in the city. And and that's my plan that I want to keep doing personally with a with a major mill and overlay at some point if I can. I'll just throw out a little hint here. One of my plans for next year, based on this year's contract pricing, is going to be significantly more, but I want to do a two-inch mill and overlay from North Fifth Street to Fourteenth Street. So north northwest Fifth Street to northwest, and and you guys all have driven it. You can see that it needs it. It's a pretty major furlough there, but at the estimated cost, it's projected to be two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And I expect it to go up. Asphalt prices went up eight to twelve percent last year. I can assume it's going to go up next year. So that just means my micro-surfacing money, that if I want to stay on my same budget of the estimated four hundred thousand dollars per se, I'm not going to get as much micro-surfacing done on on the streets in neighborhoods. I've gotten a lot of thank yous from individuals on some of them streets where they said they've lived there for thirty years or more, and they've never seen anything done on their streets. I'll just be honest, I could I could throw a dart at a map on the wall and not go wrong with where I where I want to have a street project done. But I'm trying to use the money the best we can. My personal feeling is the micro-surfacing, they did an excellent job. My former work, I was used to seeing that stuff out on a state highway where you're doing sixty-five, seventy miles an hour, and you just don't notice it out there when you're doing that compared to the a city setting. I think it's a it's a way to make our money go a little bit further, more bang for our buck. And and we should get the minimum ten years of engineering estimates, thinks it's going to last. And in my opinion, in a city setting, it's going to last even longer, especially when a lot of them streets have never had anything done to them. So I'd like to eventually integrate some downtown areas. That might mean that we might pay it a little bit more price. And the only reason that is because they have a little bit different price breakage between what they can do during a night schedule. So that crew will actually work a whole night while traffic is less, that that stuff's set up. So by the time daytime comes, you can let the traffic happen and not have interference. I was really pleased the way the projects were. I got a lot of positive feedback. I hope you guys have gotten some comments just as much as I have. Did that answer some of your questions?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Can you talk about the relative cost between the micro-surfacing and a mill and overlay? And I guess kind of the expected benefits life of each?
Relatively cost, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I can't even remember what the mill and overlay cost was. I do remember that the micro-surfacing, the city of Abilene cost, because we piggybacked on was four dollars and five cents a square yard. So the only thing you have to remember when you're in a city setting is on either on one side of the street or another, there's parking or not parking. So you can't take a standard twelve-foot long, twelve-foot wide traffic lane at twenty-four foot wide. A lot of our streets are are thirty or thirty-six. So you 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 just, you can't even relate cost comparisons to if you see a KDOT number where they did X amount of miles for X amount of dollars. It's it's not comparable in the numbers. But the the asphalt two-inch mill and overlay, obviously, I'd like to do that on every one of my streets. We we just, we can't afford it. But it's significantly more. Second part of your question, Commissioner Koloff, I apologize.
I think you hit on it. I kind of roughly, just kind of with your estimate from Fifth Street to Fourteenth Street, that's roughly twenty-six thousand dollars per block, if you will, just kind of rough number on a fifty-foot wide street.
Yeah, and and that street's not that wide, but I did do the exact cost comparison of the Third Street Mill and Overlay Project this year, took it, basically broke it down. And I know I have written on my whiteboard down in my office that the estimated cost, well, using this year's numbers, was two hundred and thirty-eight thousand for that.
I guess the second part of my question is the expected life of the micro-surfacing compared to?
Sure. Actually, both of them say seven to ten years, both on a on a two-inch mill and overlay and on the micro-surfacing. But once again, if we overlay, the more thorough fares, the more connecting length that gets a little bit heavier traffic, I still expect any of those to last a little bit longer, as long as we don't have problems with my in the base. Because I'll be honest, the the Vance Brothers contractor was very honest with me when we drove around, looked at cities, and and some of them have significant mac cracking, alligator cracking. You can cover longitudinal and latitudinal very easily. And I think that my server, I've got videos of it, and it covered up as well. But if you start having base problems, and you just try and just cap it with either an overlay or micro-surfacing, in the long sense, you're you're wasting your time. It'll look nice, and it'll look black, and it'll look pretty for a year or two, but everything underneath is going to start showing through. And so we have a lot of streets that are that are past that point, to be honest with you. Those are the projects that are going to take a little bit more money, because you're going to have to dig some base down. You're going to have to go, in a lot of them cases, an eight inches, eight inch minimum to get your your soft, you got to put a base back in, and then then it just, a good friend of mine, the Public Works Director at City of Amigo, just put out a bid for a project where they had to include the base work. And so just kind of learning that that base in a city setting, because I never had to deal with that and out on the state highway system. So but yeah, I, a lot of them are going to be past the point where I don't do any with anything with them until we just try and preserve them as long as we can. Okay, so I just wanted to give you an update about where we were at, basically because I'd I'd love to do more, but I've hit my limit that I set for myself with the money, and I played the safe game. So we'll be ready to start making plans this fall and bring it to your attention to get on the agenda early next year, so we can once again get on the contractors list so that they know and can plan to come to Abilene, Kansas. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, our next item is a motion to recess.
Have reference on. Yeah, do we want to move right into it?
Can we take a two or three minute break?
Cool.
Five.
Yeah, make it an even five for a bathroom break.
It goes so quick.
Yep. I'll make a motion to recess August eleventh, twenty twenty-five city commission meeting, and the study session will resume in this room at five fifty.
One second.
Four.
Yeah. Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We're in recess. Myself, yes, motion carries. We're in recess.
Before I go there, even though you've heard me say it a few times, I was asked by a commissioner if I could summarize the challenges that the cities faced and. Actions that we've taken or are recommending to fix that. So over the past several years, the cities experience a persistent imbalance between limited revenue growth and rising operating costs. This structural deficit where annual expenses outpaced. Recurring revenues has steadily depleted the city's reserves in all funds. Of which reduces the city's ability to respond to emergencies or invest in long-term priorities. Some specific issues that contributed to this situation, declining cash balances in key funds such as the general fund, airport fund. Capital Improvement Fund saw substantial year-end declines, limiting your flexibility. The unbudgeted transfers in twenty twenty-four, nearly one million dollars, which was moved between city funds without being reflected in the adopted budget. This is a fine practice as long as it's approved by the governing body. However, the impact of the funds that the money was transferred from, what that would do. Needs to be conveyed to the city commission. For example, in the general fund, nearly three hundred thousand or three hundred thousand dollars were transferred from the general fund to the street sales tax fund. Well, that's a non-budgeted transfer, so that three hundred thousand dollars has to come from somewhere. And where it came from is lowering your reserves significantly. Now, the reallocations that the governing body approved doesn't mean that we didn't spend this three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. That just means that. Instead of expensing the transfer from the general fund to the street sales tax fund and paying for everything out of there, it was moved back. And that three hundred thousand was still spent. Overspending multiple line items within various funds has significantly exceeded their approved amounts. Not one year, but you multiple years in a row. Again, this is fine if it's recognized and addressed in subsequent budget development. So for example, if you have a line item for professional services and every year in a department you budget ten thousand dollars. But every year you spend eighty thousand dollars. You need to address that either by reducing your cost or raising that line item, because otherwise you're budgeting ten thousand, spending eighty thousand. Doesn't work. I'm still trying to get that to my daughters who are in their thirties, but it just doesn't work out that well. Keeping in mind that the city is held to a fund balance standard, so we can't exceed the fund balance. But line items are an internal mechanism for the department directors. To manage their budgets. And the department directors did not have that information readily available, what their line items look like. When purchases were made, it was, we'll take care of it, and so that'll come up when I talk about the corrections. Grant and project misalignment, the example would be the airport grant. We applied for a grant for this purpose. But it wasn't the intended purpose, so managing that better. Rising cost, health insurance premiums were expected to rise twelve percent. And our property casualty insurance over the last several years has climbed from two hundred and seventy-six thousand to over four hundred thousand dollars annually. Service and contract inefficiencies. The city has been paying for duplicated or underused services such as high-cost internet plans, outdated. Phone system agreement, add-ons, and overlapping software subscriptions. Lack of budget visibility, department heads often did not have real-time access to spending data, making it difficult for them to track costs. Prevent overages and manage your budgets effectively. Weak purchasing controls, purchases were sometimes made without clear budget authority. Or defined funding source and service agreements were not routinely reviewed for cost effectiveness. These challenges were compounded by the decision to maintain revenue neutral mill levy, which is a policy decision of the governing body, and that's completely fine. But if the decision is made to to stay revenue neutral, then corresponding spending cuts need to be made. Because you can't spend more money than you have. And inconsistent or nonexistent for budget forecasting practices. The corrective steps that are being taken. City leadership, which is the commission and city staff, is implemented or is recommending a series of measures to stabilize finances. Improve transparency and align spending with best practices. Early on, I think in the first week or two, I implemented a spending controls, a hiring pause. With the exception of only essential positions tied to public safety or core operations. Department spending limited to core operational needs and legal obligations. Reduction of staff positions, elimination of cost of living allowances and annual merit increases. And no discretionary transfers to reserve funds or outside organizations unless contractually required. Budget process reforms, standardizing budget reporting into four main categories. Personnel, contractual commodities, and capital outlay. Currently, there's half a dozen to a dozen different line items, depending on what budget you're at. If you can keep that to four standard. Line items, it's easier for the governing body to track and the public to track. Improving forecasting accuracy or actually doing financial forecasting and aligning expenditures with adopted budgets. Regular monthly budget reports for department heads showing the remaining funds and detailed spending by vendor and line item. Correcting past budget violation that the mission just approved. Operational efficiency. Ending work at various locations beyond what is required by the agreements. Cross-training key positions, reviewing and renegotiating service contracts. To eliminate duplication of services and reduce costs. Issuing requests for proposals for essential services at a reduced scope. And investigating all recurring service charges such as phone, internet, to ensure the necessity of those services and the value is there. And then transparency and oversight, increase public reporting on budget status, reserve levels, and mill levy implications. Implementing an appropriation ordinance, showing expenditures by fund with a detailed listing of each payment. Clear documentation of grant revenues and expenditures to ensure accountability. This project-specific funds that the commission approved. And regular engagement with our auditor to verify figures and support corrective actions. Some of the things that we can do in the future to improve financial reporting. To the commission and the public is that we start giving a monthly report to the commission. Of actual revenues and expenditures versus budget, fund balances. The benefit of that is not only city staff, but the commission and even the public can see emerging overspending or funding declines. They would be visible months in advance rather than when you see your audit. The creation of a budget to actual dashboard. Publish a live, monthly updated budget dashboard that's accessible not only to the commissioners but to the public on our website. It'll include fund level and department level data, budgeted versus actual spending, how much budget is remaining and trends in our reserves. The city's current accounting system, I believe you went to a year, a year and a half ago, can provide this public-facing data. If the reporting module is fully used. The benefit will reduce reliance on verbal updates and makes discrepancies obvious. Adopting a policy for budget amendments and transfers. Require a formal commissal approval, mission approval by resolution for any inter-fund transfer that's not included in the adopted budget. And with that, mandates that city staff provide the commission with an analysis to determine the impact. On the budget the funds are coming from before they approve the the transfer. The benefit is that it prevents unbudgeted transfers without formal authorization. Being memorialized by resolution and forces a discussion on the transfer's impact to the overall budget. Implementing mandatory service contract reviews, schedule annual or biannual. Review of all active service agreements such as IT, utilities, janitorial maintenance, engineering. Present cost changes, usage data and renewal recommendations to the commission. And any agreement that extends more than one year, so multi-year agreements. Require formal commission approval regardless of the cost. The benefit of that will it will flag cost creep like our phone and internet bills that we've seen over the years. Before they actually accumulate and are hard to get out of. And require multi-year contacts and service agreements to include non-appropriation language. It's required by statute, but some of our agreements do not have that. And the statutes require that any agreement that's made with the municipality has to have non-appropriation language that basically says. If it's not budgeted for, then you can get out of the agreement. And then use of red flag traders, adopt a policy that triggers. And require staff to notify the commission immediately if a fund is projected to end the year with less than the fifteen percent minimum reserve. Expenditures in the fund are exceeded, projected to exceed the budget. And normally, if you're going to exceed the budget authority in a fund, you bring that up towards the end of the year. But if we're doing financial forecasting, we should be able to come to you. If it is the case, at any month in the year and say, hey, on the course we're going, this fund is gonna be over budget. And then you have a discussion and then the council makes a policy decision on what do we do about it? And then a capital project or grant that is at risk due to the change in scope or compliance issues. All of these built, create a built-in early warning system, not only for city staff, but the commissioners. So looking ahead and preparing the twenty twenty-six budget. It's aimed at maintaining or lowering the mill levy while restoring fiscal stability. Many cost-saving measures have been implemented now, but will not show their full impact until twenty-six and beyond. These changes are gonna require difficult decisions and will impact some services. However, they're essential to rebuilding reserves, ensuring compliance with financial regulations. And safeguarding the city of Abilene's long-term financial stability. I can tell you that the department directors are committed to transparent communication, sound fiscal management, and responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars. In nearly three decades of public service. I've not come across a set of department directors or department heads that care as much about the community as the ones that you have here now. So they make my job much easier because they are always coming with ideas on, hey, here's how we can try to save our cost. You should be proud of them. The first thing that you have up on your, up on the screen or that I handed out, the mill levy. In twenty twenty-five for this year was forty-five point six four eight. The mission authorized a mill levy not to exceed forty-seven point five five six. The budget as presented is forty-seven point five zero eight. That's an increase of one point eight six mills over last year. The impact on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be thirty-two dollars a year. The pie chart that you see there shows where those forty-seven point five oh eight mills go. Seventy-one percent goes to the general fund, and that includes administrative, which would be things like the city manager, finance director, city clerk. Police, which includes animal control. Fire department, which also does building inspections and pre-planning, streets and alleys, flood maintenance, the parks. The pool and community development, which is integral to the. Growth of the city and making sure that things are built according to code and and whatnot. The library makes up the next largest portion of seventeen percent. Followed by debt service, which is seven percent, fire apparatus is five percent, and the budget presented, the airport is zero percent. That's just an overview of where those forty-seven mills go. The next one you have is an allocation of motor vehicle, recreation vehicle, heavy trucks, commercial vehicles, and watercraft axes. I won't spend too much time on it, but what that shows you is it's based on the twenty twenty-five budget, which is based on the twenty twenty-four ad valorem levy. And there at the bottom is a calculation that's provided by the county clerk. And that is how it's determined the general fund gets three hundred and fourteen or two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in motor vehicle tax. The debt service twenty-nine thousand, library fifty-six thousand, fire apparatus eleven thousand. And I apologize if the staples staples went in backwards, but you have a very old and honorary copy machine that. I'm glad that there's nobody around when I make your copies. Schedule the transfers. You can see in twenty twenty-six that we're proposing similar transfers in twenty twenty-five. With the exception of the sewer and stormwater, you can see those are slightly increased. That is based on a five percent transfer. If they were private utilities, that's generally what a franchise fee would be. The general fund going to the equipment reserve, we cannot afford to transfer anything more than what is required for debt service on the street sweeper. And then the ones I have highlighted in yellow, those were some of the transfers made in twenty-four. That we've now wiped out. Next page is a statement of indebtedness. A municipality can have up to thirty percent of its assessed valuation in debt. We have general obligation bonds you can see there. That started as early as twenty seventeen and as late as twenty nineteen. Little outstanding debt for general obligation bonds is seven point two million dollars. The Public Building Commission has a revenue bond for the hospital. The initial amount issued was seventeen million. The outstanding amount is thirteen point nine. It's important to note that even though that is in the city's budget, the hospital makes those payments. They have, I don't see any issue that they wouldn't. It's just important to note that if they're ever unable to. The city is liable to make those payments. And then other bonds, we have the temporary general obligation notes, the. First year twenty twenty-six, we have three hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars in interest. There's no principal. The way those temporary notes were written for two years, we just pay interest and that interest was actually included into the bond, make those payments. While those projects were nine million dollars in bonds. Nearly a million dollars was for interest for the two or three years that they, until you guys, till the city does permanent bonds. The next page is a statement of conditional lease purchase. You can see there that the city paid off a. Street sweeper, last payment was in twenty twenty-five. We have a lease purchase for a fire truck that started in twenty eighteen, a water meter in twenty eighteen, another fire truck in twenty twenty-three, and the street sweeper. My apologies, I didn't fill in the the contract date or the amounts. My apologies, I didn't fill in the the contract date or the amounts, but that is the payment amount is sixty seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. On that, so you can add that to that column.
That was a six year term on that, correct?
For the.
The street sweeper?
I believe so, yeah. Ideally, when you look at the general obligation bonds and the lease purchase. The I. The best place to get the city to is where you wouldn't have to have any lease purchase, you have a ten year equipment reserve and capital improvement plan. You know what you're going to need to buy in the next 10 years and you start saving the money up for it. That's ideal, I don't know if there's many cities in the state of Kansas that can do that, but that should be a goal. Of city staff and the commission to pay cash as we go. The next one is the one that most people talk about, it's the general fund. The levy for the general fund is thirty three point five five four mils. Of that forty seven mils that we talked about. You can see there at the top, the under covered cash balance in twenty four. Was 1.9 million dollars, it dropped to 1.3 million dollars. And estimated for twenty six is eight hundred and four thousand, that was about five hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. But some of the cuts that we have made and freezing hiring has reduced. Our expenses, so we're projecting that we'll have more carryover into twenty six. It prints out pretty crazy, it's that printer. We can't can't get a new one, but if you look at the next page, interest on idle funds for twenty five, we have a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Kelsey has gone out for bids from local banks for. Interest rates to hold those bond monies until we need to draw down from them. So that should increase, but keeping in mind that of those ten million dollars in bond proceeds. One point nine million was for the C clip projects, so whatever the percentage of that ten million. Well, twenty percent of the interest we get would go into this column here. And the other remaining parts would go to the other two items that were bonded for. So you can see on the next page, it's says resources available. When you began in twenty twenty four, the resources available were nearly eight million dollars. In twenty five, it was seven, and in twenty twenty six, it's estimated that your resources available will be four point four million dollars. That's a significant drop from eight million down to four point four in the course of two years. But you can see that the expenditures over the years in twenty twenty four. Six point three million dollars. In twenty twenty five, we're projecting six million, again, that was an additional three hundred thousand dollars in cuts. That's why that's lower than the previous year and the expenditures for twenty twenty six in the general fund are six point three. So you're looking at approximately thirty six thousand dollars in increased expenses in the general fund from twenty twenty four. And again, the same information here is on the next page with the total expenditures. Then we get into the detail, which goes down by departments within the general fund. These numbers here reflect zero percent cost of living adjustment for employees, zero. Or no merit increases, an estimated twelve percent increase in health insurance. An increase in electricity cost. And that we have reduced one position in the police department and one position in public works. So one of the things that. You'll notice on administrative that that cost went down to. From four hundred and thirty eight thousand and twenty four to three hundred thousand this year and two hundred and thirty two thousand. In twenty twenty six, we took a position that. Previously reported to the city manager and assigned that to community development. Where she was doing most of her work and she's very effective there and doing a great job. But you'll see the contractual went up and that's because some of the costs of software like in code. The annual costs that weren't being budgeted for are now budgeted for in the contractual section for administrative. Commodities drop down, it's a reallocation of how things are being categorized. Remember I said that depending on which department you were, you could have five different line items or you could have a dozen. We're getting this down to salaries and benefits, contractual and commodities. And then I would recommend in when you start doing your twenty twenty seven budget, that you also. Break out salaries and personnel benefits and you have a personnel benefits fund. Because it's much clearer when you're looking at it as a governing body, when you look at. The cost of a department, so for administrative. Four hundred and thirty eight thousand, well. Is that all salaries, does that mean those four positions being paid out of there are making that kind of money? No, that's in that number, it's including health insurance, capers. The federal taxes that the city pays their portion of. So in twenty twenty seven, I would recommend that you adopt a resolution and ordinance on defer to errand. But you create a personnel benefits fund and you separate those costs, it just provides clarity to you on what people are costing as opposed to benefit. Because most of the time benefits outweigh the cost of the actual hourly wage. And then if you look down under police, fire, streets and alleys, in previous years, everything was thrown into commodities. There's zero budget for contractual, we've broken those down into the respective. Item, so for example, the police before had two hundred and sixty six thousand dollars in commodities in twenty twenty five. Well, it's a hundred and twenty seven in twenty twenty six with a hundred and fifty for contractual. So most of those you'll see the increase as far as the salaries and benefits would be for the twelve percent increase in health insurance. And some of those have declined again because we've removed a position. And then you'll at the bottom of that page, of the next page, you'll see in twenty. Four that the total cost for the general fund departments was five point eight million dollars. This year, we've got it down to five point four, I believe it was budgeted for over six. But because of the cuts we've made and in twenty twenty six, it's at five point eight million. So if you look at twenty four and twenty six, it's gone up. A thousand dollars, a little bit more than a thousand dollars in cost for the general fund. And that's not because costs have gone down, it's because of the cuts that were made to the operating budgets for each one of those departments. The next page after that is. General fund detail page two, it continues with the departments inspection, municipal court, the senior center, civic center and land bank. Are there any questions on the general fund?
I have about a dozen, but I'll shoot you an email if that's okay.
Yes, sir. We'll move over to debt service then, if there's no other questions, debt service. Is in twenty five, required a mill levy of four point three three six mils and twenty six, it'll require three point three. That's because the cost of your principal and interest on your debt service goes down each year. You can see the bond and interest was four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars in twenty four, four fifty five in twenty five. And we're down to four hundred and twenty thousand in twenty twenty six. But still, it's requiring a levy of two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in property tax. The library is. Projected to receive a six hundred and thirty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar appropriation. Remember from a previous discussion that to qualify for a library grant, the library either has to have an increase in. The annual allocation or the mill levy has to increase, the. State statute requires that the governing body fund. The library at their full request unless that is limited by law. And the city commission adopted an ordinance several years ago, I don't have the date. That listed the max for the library at eight point two two mils. They've requested the full eight point two two mils, so this budget reflects that, so the tax required is five hundred and seventy nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. The airport is receiving zero levy. One, because we're in a holding pattern on what we're going to do with the T hangers and. Realigning how things are allocated. Earlier, there was a question about. The insurance proceeds and being spent. Up until recently, the airport manager who does a great job, he's also the fixed base operator. But he's an independent contractor and he was taking care of. Cost. At the airport with the use of the city credit card or going to a local vendor and charging that. We've stopped that, we've moved the credit card to. Finance directors because there's a recurring expense for internet or the automated weather observation system. And. And it's not punish the airport manager or say he's doing anything wrong or has. But it doesn't align with the city's purchasing policy that requires if we do a purchase. It's from zero to twenty five hundred, here's what you got to do, if it's twenty five hundred and one to twenty four nine ninety nine, here's what you got to do and twenty five thousand above, it has to come to the commission. Well. We can make that work, but it's got to follow our purchasing and that will help. I think steady some of the fluctuations that you've seen in the airport. But we do have budget is estimated capital outlay in twenty twenty six, that number is likely going to change. From the time of the regular meeting until the start of the work study. I've got notification that K dot will reallocate the grant to the ninety five five. So I ask it will bring, we will bring a grant amendment agreement from K dot to do that in August twenty fifth for your review. As well as some updated cost and timeline. For that project doing a six and eight hanger, so this is likely change. If it doesn't change by August twenty fifth, you'll have to do a budget amendment in twenty six. No, because we're not going to build till twenty seven, you'll be good. A fire apparatus is the next page, this is where things such as. The fire truck or bunker gear or fire hose and those types of things. The expected cost in twenty twenty six is two hundred and twenty six thousand for fire truck lease purchase payments, that's for both vehicles. And twenty five thousand dollars for bunker gear. That'll require a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in property tax or two point four mils. The capital improvement. I had it written down and I left it over there somewhere, it has very little money in it now. And we're not living anything to put money into it in twenty four, four hundred thousand dollars was. Budget for capital outlay, you had an unencumbered cash balance of four hundred and thirty six, but you spent four hundred thousand dollars. Which left you. Adding the other taxes you receive fifty three thousand dollars in twenty twenty five. I guess that would be the the balance around fifty thousand dollars. So the city staff and we'll bring that to you on August twenty fifth is developing ten year. Plans for capital improvements, equipment reserves. Not only for the general fund, but for the utilities as well. So when you're doing the budget process, you can see ten years out. What what is needed or what's recommended and you can. Prioritize those and change them, that plan is dynamic, but it'll help you with budgeting. Special highway, you receive money from. Gas tax, so every time somebody fills fuel in the city limits of Abilene. Portion of that tax comes back to the to the city and to the county. You can see in twenty four, we received a hundred and seventy five thousand, we're estimating a hundred and sixty eight thousand and twenty five and the same for twenty six. K dot funds. The five hundred and forty three would be some grant money plus the eighty two thousand, eighty thousand dollars we receive every year. From them, we are not. We did not put any K dot funds other than the eighty thousand dollars received annually because of the project specific budgeting for. For example, the C clip. And then the expenditures would be eighty two thousand dollars, which would be the money that. Brad uses to work on the streets outside of the special street sales tax. Speaking of the street sales tax, in the first year, which is only part of the year that you received it, you received two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, it's projected. That you'll receive four hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And but you can see in twenty four, you started with seven hundred thousand dollars, you got two hundred and seventy six thousand and seven tax. But you spent nine hundred and fifty nine thousand, so you dropped that. Unencumbered balance or that reserve from seven hundred thousand dollars to sixty three thousand. Now we'll probably adjust this when we bring it back to you and. On the twenty fifth, because although we're projecting four hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue. Like Brad was talking, it will only budget on. Micro surfacing or projects like that of three hundred and sixty or three hundred and eighty thousand, because you can't count on the sales tax being that full amount. And you need to start building your reserve back up. And that's another example of the department heads doing what they can to start getting back on the path of fiscal responsibility, yes, sir.
You're showing a negative hundred and fifty thousand dollar unencumbered cash balance on December thirty one in twenty six. Is that a typo?
Yes, if you look here and that's a it's it's a typo and an error my part, you see where it says cash reserve. Twenty twenty six column of two hundred and thirteen thousand. We reduce that by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the idea is that. You budget to zero in the special reserve funds and that number in the. Cash reserve, which now is two hundred and thirteen, so it would be. Sixty three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars is what would be projected to carry over. But that, yes, that is a typo, that two hundred and thirteen should be sixty three thousand and that would negate the negative one. I'd like to blame that on the copier, but I can't. Recycling fund, it's self sustaining, you can see though that the. The under covered cash has been pretty steady every year, fifty two thousand, seventy four thousand, fifty two thousand, no major changes there. The water and sewer, these are what I'm showing you are. The budgets without any correction because they both show deficits in. Well, I'm ahead of myself, this is stormwater. And that's pretty sufficient every year, you can see the unencumbered cash is six hundred, six hundred and five hundred and sixty, so it's pretty self sufficient. But like council or commissioner. Wit said, there'll be some decisions or. Or prioritization by the commission on where do you spend that six hundred dollars and how much of it do you spend? To carry over when you're looking at the Buckeye project and the drainage issue northeast fifteenth street or fourteenth fifteenth. Special parks and recreation, that money comes from alcohol tax, so. The more you buy locally and and drink, the more tax that the city receives, so cheers. And. We did take the the two thousand dollar. And the general fund that was going to the tree board and moved it here because that's the purpose of a fund like this. Rather than using property taxes, we use alcohol tax. Special alcohol and drug is for the police department. And that is. Unchanged year from year, nothing significant there, library pool renovation is a. A fund that's had sixteen thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars in it for quite some time. And Kelly has some work that needs to be done at the the pool, so we'll be using that fund. Zero that out and close that fund down, so it's not just hanging out there. It was originally intended for renovations to the pool. Okay, now I'm on water, that's the one with all the red on it. You can see that. The unencumbered cash balance in twenty four started with nine hundred and fourteen thousand, if you go down. A third of the way, total receipts is about two million dollars, that's from charges for service, sales tax, which we send into the states. So resources available in twenty four was two point nine million dollars, that's taking your unencumbered cash and your revenue. But you spent two million five. So that reduced your unencumbered cash from nine hundred thousand to four hundred and thirty seven, so you go back up to twenty five. You now started with four hundred and thirty seven thousand, same amount of revenue, pretty consistent on amount of water that's used every year. So you now had. Resources available from two point nine million in twenty four, you're down to two point five, but you spent two point seven million. This year's what was budgeted, I'll just say it one more time, because. Your receipts were two million dollars, your cash carryover, add that in, you had two million four hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. But the budget. Plan to spend two point seven million dollars, that would leave you in the hole two hundred and seven thousand dollars. planned to spend two point seven million dollars. That would leave you in the hole two hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is a budget violation you cannot do. So Kelsey and Brad have been working on uh, reducing those expenditures and you can see capital outlay there is uh, the prime target. To reduce the um, to get that back to zero. But now if you go over to twenty six, you're starting twenty six in the hole, two hundred and seven thousand. They can't do that. Yes, sir.
I did have a question here. You've got the general obligation bonds. That's a previous series, the sixty three thousand dollars in interest. Principal and interest payments. Uh, it's like fifth line.
Yeah, I said down there, uh, it's thirty percent of general obligation bond series. The series has been cut off. Cause you know what series that is?
Yes, it's um, the original.
That's the water meters.
Correct.
No.
Or no, hold on, let me get.
I believe that's the combo of eighth street and the water treatment plant improvements. I believe so.
It is, yes. The eighth street water treatment plant and then a sewer that we did in two thousand and nineteen, according to this. It's split between three different funds. I hope you can hear me.
Thank you.
That thirty percent is from my reference.
So we can't start two thousand twenty six in the hole. So we're gonna have to reduce the expenditures to at least be even. So you're uh, not negative. That means you'll start twenty six at zero, unless you're gonna do some more. Uh, charges for service. Total receipts about uh, two point one million dollars, but you can see there again, whole expenditures would be two point seven million dollars. You would go in and have to cut uh, capital outlay. But some of the capital outlay that you're doing, you have to maintain the water plant and your distribution lines and your well field. So what this tells me and uh, that you're gonna have to, the commission to not be in the hole year after year for water, you're gonna have to look at the uh, the rates. Now I did notice and I have not uh, checked it, but the um, water that is the finished water that's sold to the uh, public wholesale water supply district is about a dollar eighty um, per thousand gallons. I asked Brad to calculate the cost per thousand gallons, but uh, I would be willing to bet you can't produce water for less than five dollars a thousand gallon. So um, we'll have to bring a, some rate recommendations to the commission and you're looking at a negative balance of eight hundred nineteen thousand dollars on a two million dollar utility. No way that uh, well, I mean, you could, but I wouldn't recommend bringing an eight hundred thousand dollar rate increase to uh, to you because, well, I think the uh, copiers mean just wait until I suggest raising rates to recoup that money. But what you can do is a combination of cutting costs, looking at rates over a period of time. And one thing that I would uh, suggest is right now you have a flat rate structure is um, look at a flat rate for zero to three thousand or zero to four thousand gallons. And then from four thousand one to, I'm just picking numbers arbitrarily to eight thousand would be a, a higher limit and then you move on until you get to a certain maximum. So what that does is it protects people that are not using a, a ton of water. Um, they're just using it for, you know, daily living. But if you're filling a fifty thousand gallon swimming pool with a big leak, you're gonna pay some extra. I mean, that's a conversation, but the budget is presented to you shows a deficit. And what I can do when I bring it to you on the twenty fifth, because we're gonna ask you to publish it, is make that what's not, because you have to. I mean, you can't adopt the budget with a negative. With the caveat that you're gonna have to address rates sooner rather than later. I mean, you'll have to do it no sooner or no later than January one of twenty six, but probably uh, even sooner than that because you're in the hole now. Same thing with the, the sewer fund. If you look, um, I won't go into as much detail, but it was budgeted for one point six million dollars in receipts. And because of the declining reserves, um, and not reducing costs. It's budgeted to end two thousand twenty five, negative seventy two thousand dollars. And without adjusting the rates, uh, or the sewer charges, you're gonna have to cut six hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in expenses, which it looks like you're not transferring much into your uh, reserve as it is. And you've got a sewer plant to maintain. And I'm sure the commissioners that have been here for a while or the public that have been here for a while, the uh, mechanical plant is not cheap to replace when it reaches its end of life. So, again, we'll bring you something on the twenty fifth that at least zeros out, but you'll have to do something with rates sooner rather than later. Recreation commission, um, Kelly does a great job working with the rec board. You can see there that uh, each year in twenty four is about five hundred thousand carryover, four hundred and fifty, it drops down to two eighty five, um. And it looks like that the uh, cost of administration and um, athletics have gone up as well as special projects. But overall, the uh, the recreation commission budget is one that, the least ones that you have to worry about. It does pretty good. Convention and visitors bureau, uh, normally is funded by, wholly by a transient guest tax. And you can see in twenty four, you collected two hundred and six thousand dollars in transient guest tax. My memory serves correct, it's uh, eight percent guest tax in every room that somebody stays at. Which is about middle of the road for other communities in uh, in Kansas. But in twenty five, um, the remittances of transient guest tax have not, they've dropped drastically. And city staff is uh, in conversation with the department of revenue and the uh, remitters or remitter to uh, bring them current. I can't go into too much detail about that. But I can say that the hundred and seventy five thousand in projected transient guest tax, even that was budgeted in twenty five. Unless something changes dramatically in uh, the next six months, uh, you'll get nowhere near that. You'll be lucky to hit a hundred thousand. Now speaking with the department of revenue, they generally give a business a twelve month window to, to get current. So you, if you see it and they get on time, you may, but that's gonna reduce your cash carryover. Uh, from a budgeted hundred and sixty two thousand, you may only have sixty two thousand. So you can see that uh, we're budgeting a fifty thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the convention and visitors bureau. If the, for two reasons, one, you have the uh, two hundred and fiftieth birthday uh, of the United States, which would be a big deal, especially in a community like Abilene. Uh, you got the uh, world cup soccer and all of that's in Kansas City. You'll have a lot of traffic and travel here, a lot of promotion. And Julie does an amazing job uh, promoting uh, Abilene and everything that it has to offer. So if we get the transient guest tax collections back where they should be. Even though we're budgeting fifty thousand dollars to transfer from the general fund to the C P B, you may not have to in twenty six, if we can get them current. But we put that there because she has to be able to operate. Um, right now she's operating and, and the work she does is with herself and a part time person, which is pretty amazing. Then the last page you have here is uh, what will ask the uh, commission to approve that we publish. Those numbers may change a little bit because of some of the uh, items I discussed, but generally the part that people care about, which would be the uh, proposed tax rate. Um, which is on the far right hand column will not change. When we, I'll say this again on the twenty fifth, but when we ask you to publish uh, this notice of hearing, budget hearing. Once it's published in the paper, uh, you can change the budget, you can reduce it, but you can't go any higher. So what we present on the twenty fifth isn't locked in concrete, except for you can't go any higher, but you can make cuts if you like. So the uh, as presented, the uh, mill levy rate is forty seven point five oh eight. That compares to forty five point six four eight last year and forty seven point three five six uh, this year. Which generally you'd say, well, that's all within a mill, but the valuation is also increased uh, every year. So again, we're asking for thirty three mils, uh, thirty three point five mils for the general fund. Three mils for a debt service, eight point two mils for the library, nothing for the airport. Two point four mils for fire apparatus and zero into capital improvement. And by doing so, unless we make major changes, and I know the uh, that will only leave you with two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in cash carryover, um, for the general fund. Historically, you've tried to keep at least a million dollars cash carryover. Is when January one rolls over the new year, all the revenue that's projected, the taxes that are levied, uh, they'll come in on January first or even January fifteenth. You get those throughout the year, so you have to have money to operate on. So although it shows that you'll only have two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars cash carryover for the general fund in twenty six. Continuing to make efficiencies and uh, renegotiate the contracts that are not advantageous to the city, frankly, just crazy expensive, um, you should be carrying more money over this year into twenty six and reducing your costs in twenty. This is the worst case scenario. Are there any questions?
No, um, I'll be setting up a meeting with you in the next, I'll just set up a meeting with you in the next week or so. Meet and go over some of my questions as well, so.
Are there any changes that you'd like to see?
I'd like to talk about them first.
Okay.
Yeah, same here. I've got a, just a handful of questions and maybe a couple of suggestions.
So uh, the next meeting will present this in final form and uh, ask you to publish at the notice of hearing in the paper on the twenty fifth, because we have the uh, revenue neutral hearing on September eighth. And uh, notice of budget hearing on September eighth and we'll have to have ten days of notice, but we're right up against the window.
Okay, we have any further questions at this time? Thank you. No further questions, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries, we are adjourned.